I'd like to call the special meeting budget workshop one to order on Thursday, January 24th in the Stanley T. Williams Community Center at 6:06 PM. We'll call.
Ms. Pappelholzer.
Here.
Vice Sharon Aufrio.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Janice Bolzamo.
Here.
Shirley King-Malora.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
On his way.
Cynthia Rice.
Here.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has a copy of the document, correct?
Right.
And should have the PowerPoint as well for our to start. Just a quick overview, similar to what we've done in the past. Don has a PowerPoint, so it's probably advantageous if you're sitting at the front table to slide to the side. Then you'll be able to see what he's speaking to and then make notes and things if you have questions as we go along. The entire administrative team is here tonight, so they're here to answer questions that you may have had since getting your book last week. So now is the first opportunity to ask those questions. If they don't have answers, they'll get that information back to us as well. Okay? So we're good to go if there's no questions. If you want to slide over. Oh. Well, who's going?
Do you want the lights off?
You want the lights off?
They're behind you.
Whatever's easier for you to take notes and see.
Lights on or off? Whatever's easier for you guys. So you do like half and half? Do that right there.
Oh, we're not in charge.
This is the one.
Yeah.
The other one?
The one that's not flicking.
Yeah.
Oh, I kind of like just threw.
So this is just a quick overview of what was in your board book. The status quo budget requires an increase of 2.18%, and superintendent is requesting an increase of 3.26%. Major contributions are salaries and is also almost a third of the percent for special education. So this is that same thing, just presented numerically so you can see the actual numbers. The status quo increase is about 689,000. And superintendent's increase is about another 342 over the status quo for a total of 1,031,000. So just for process sake, as we build a budget, and we did send out to you, I don't know when, it was a couple of weeks ago, 1920 budget priorations from the administrators. So they're on the templates. You could go through and look at each individual building, the tech department, and central office to have an idea. So as we put all this together, we then look at common themes and streamline down to present what we think is a responsible budget to the board. Obviously, status quo is just carrying everything forward. The increases will be based upon that 1.0808 would be based upon conversations that the administrative team had and what they felt was the highest priority or our greatest needs right now for this next year. So the increase in certified salaries has been a little over 1% for the teacher's contract and 0.71% for three additional teaching positions. Total increase is just over a half million dollars. And that includes board funding, all certified staff except one pre-K teacher. It's still in the Smart Start grant. And part of another teacher using Title II, or Title II funding has actually dropped off. So that no longer covers the lion's share of teaching position. For non-certified salaries, as well as four new paraprofessional positions adds another 1 and 1/4%. And the total increase is just over $400,000. That also includes $35,000 restored onto the board side to make up for lost Title I funding. Don, can you speak to the amount of Title I that we usually get that we didn't get? Well, a couple of years ago, we got about $145,000. This year, 1819, we received about $75,000. And I mentioned this before, that there are two problems with Title I. One, we don't find out what the number's going to be until October. And then you're already into the budget year. The second issue with this particular grant, which is not the case with Title II. With Title II, you can carry an entire year forward. So the money that will be used for this budget for the teacher for Title II, we actually have already, is already allocated to us this year and will carry it over. Title I, you can only carry over 85%. Excuse me, you can only carry over 15%. You have to spend 85%. So I can't, I can't use, I can't allocate that money going forward any more than 15% of the budget, which now this year is only about $10,000. And Don, just explain Title I and what it's used for, so everyone's understanding. Well, Title I is used, I mean, it's for remedial instruction primarily. And we use it for paraprofessionals. We use it for supplies. And we use it for some other, other instructional programs like the Strategies for Success at Totucket Valley. And am I missing anything?
Sure. Star Program, Jerome's after-school program for reading.
Do they give you a reason why there was the decrease? Am I allowed to ask questions?
Yes. You are. This is the time, absolutely. So the question is rationale for decrease.
Like, do they ever give you an explanation why or a explanation why?
No. We don't really get an explanation. And I mean, this goes back, and time flies when you're having fun. It might be 10 or 15 years now. With a previous superintendent, we lost our Title I funding completely one year. It just dropped to zero. And then just as suddenly, a few years later, it came back.
Is there like an application that needs to be done, a process to get it? That gives you like a rationale for the money you get?
No, these are entitlement grants. So what happens is if there's funding available, and this is what we find out in October. If there's funding available, they tell us how much funding we're eligible for. And then we do have to do an application and tell them what we're going to spend the money on. And after the end of the year, there's also a report back on what we actually spent the money on, which is, you know, pretty similar, but obviously sometimes the numbers for paraprofessional salaries may be a little different. But that's the extent of what we learn about the funding.
Thank you.
Sure. And so health insurance, health insurance actually would have decreased for active employees by about a half, to the tune of a half a percent. The new positions add 0.25% back in. But then there's another 0.4%. There's actually an increase in retiree costs under the new state plan. And that has to do with the fact that the retired teachers have to pay the same rate as the active teachers. But when we get the bills from Oxford, it's the actual cost which is higher.
In the previous plan, they didn't pay the same?
Excuse me?
In the previous plan, retirees did not pay the same?
Well, see, in the Anthem Plan, yes, they paid the same, but they were also billed the same.
Gotcha.
There was no, there was no leveling in the old plan. So it was only based on, the teachers would pay the same thing as the active teachers because they had the same plan designed, the same benefits. And the experience, which, you know, might have been more for the retired teachers who were enrolled in the plan, you didn't see that on an individual basis. It simply got rolled into the overall experience. And then, of course, when we went self-insured, then it became part of the claims. Now, on the town side, they actually have a separate fund for, an OPEB fund for retirees. And that's the other piece of that, is that will be, there's an actuarial valuation done on that. And there's a contribution that's required for us to make into that fund. And that contemplates future costs for the plan. Can I? You have to do that one. Excuse me? Right, no, I didn't. So I reduced the electric power consumption, which results in a decrease of about $26,000. And also a net decrease in $18,000 in sewer and water costs. And those, I just estimated those a little tighter this year. And the water, I think, has to do with, we had some issues with our underground water system at Totucket Valley. We had some leaks, and that's all finally taken care of. And so, you know, we're seeing a benefit from that. The base transportation contract and the diesel fuel costs would have reduced our transportation by about $20,000. But that's offset by some increases for the tech schools and for private transportation for special education. And then there's a small component in there for athletics as well. So Don, just for the Connecticut Technical High School transportation, so just so that everyone is aware, like Vinyl Tech, you know, we have a responsibility to transport, but we also have a situation where we have students in Meriden? This one is at O'Brien. O'Brien Tech. We have transported to Meriden in the past. When someone, when one of our students is enrolled in a tech school, we provide a bus to Vinyl. That's sort of our, I mean, that's our tech school. But if they go to another school, we're required to provide transportation. So we're fortunate that we can get back with East Haven. So we meet the East Haven bus and they shuttle him up, or her up, to the school and back for that situation. And we try to do that, you know, we try to cooperate with other towns to the extent we can. There was a time we were transporting a few Branford students to Vinyl because we were running the bus to Vinyl. So they would come to our stop, get on the bus, and then go to Vinyl. And so now we're doing the same thing with East Haven with the student that's going to O'Brien. For ECA, we transport there. They're responsible for their ride home, so we only go one way to East Haven, to ECA.
Lionel, are you doing that with East Haven also, or it's just us?
No, that's just, typically it's, I think, East Haven, I don't remember. Well, East Haven must, East Haven must be transported to O'Brien because that's where, that's why we're using. So it's sort of like, most towns have what I guess you would refer to as a home tech school. And that's where they transport to. But if you have these one-offs, you know, you try to make arrangements and make it as reasonable as possible.
So the one that's moved to O'Brien is a bit different program, or why is that school instead of Vinyl?
I think it's a student that enrolled there when they were living there and then moved. So I think we had to.
Wanted to continue.
Keep in that system. Because we only offer, we only solicit. Well, liability insurance, this is one you've actually seen in this year's budget, it'd be somewhat in the red. And it's, so I first had to add the shortfall from this year and then an additional 6%, which caused an increase of about $33,000. Outside placements are assumed increase just short of $100,000. They're budgeted at full cost, that is, I cannot reduce them by the excess cost grant. The way we're currently set up, the excess cost grant goes to the town. We did reduce special education contracted services by $66,000 in anticipation of hiring a BCBA ourselves. Don, just speaking to the increase of 99,317 for out placements, approximately what we're spending currently for outplace students is, it's, I'm trying to get your turn. I can walk that turning. It's helpful, I think, if you know what we're paying now currently, if you see an increase of 99,000, what that would mean. And that could be one student. Well, we do carry, in fairness, we do carry $120,000 in unanticipated placements. So we have about $270,000 for Lyman, Sound, and other non-special ed placements. Lyman Hall, South School. Right. It's going to pay tuition. We have $596,000 for special ed public, which is mostly ACES. There's, there are also some components of that. One of the things that happens with some of the other schools that I mentioned, like Lyman or Sound, is if we have students getting special ed services, we pay for those, but that goes into the 561 instead of the 560. And then there's $650,000 for private outside tuition placements. So total's over a million? Oh, yeah.
Question. You said you decreased the $66,000 by getting a board certified behavior analyst. How much would that person cost?
Let me have Ms. Wright speak to that because that's part of her department. So the question was for the BCBA savings, if we were to take a per diem rate and then look to offset it with an employee coming on?
Right now, we pay approximately $66,000 a year for two days of BCBA services. We're hoping to hire someone. They, it ends up ranging between $85,000 and $100,000, just in the range of what a BCBA or a certification position. So there's more flexibility in that. We're hoping that we can have a full-time person and have many more days for less money.
It's budgeted for $104,000 is what the position is, and that includes benefits, of course. And then the offset is 65.5.
So you budgeted $66,000?
Right now, it's from the special education budget, under professional services. So if we have a BCBA as an employee, I would not need that to be part of my budget, so my departmental budget would be just by that amount.
So you're allocating $104 for this person?
Right, so the net increase is about $40,000.
But right now, we're paying out $66,000.
For just two days?
For two days. But this one would be a full-time hire.
Correct.
But right now, that 66 was coming out of your budget?
Correct.
So would that transfer out of your budget? That was?
Yes.
So just so everyone's, could you just quickly just say what the BCBA person does with, what their earnings look like in the district?
A board certified behavior analyst provides consultation services to our district, observes students, helps to develop behavior plans for students, trains staff, and they do a lot of data collection and data charting. So that's teachers and other, the school psychologists and social workers can review students' behavioral data and then make decisions about revising those plans. Really, it's, the purpose of the behavior analyst is largely to maintain students to stay in district programs rather than requiring out-of-district programs because the majority of our students who are placed out of district are placed there because of behavioral issues that made it unsafe for them to stay in our schools. And so this, certainly that the increase in behavioral issues over the course of years, which is true across this state and certainly across the country, necessitates the need for a behavior analyst. Our staff are trained by the BCBA so that they can also collect data and manage that, but don't have as much expertise to develop the complex behavior plans and conduct functional behavior assessments, which they use in determining and developing behavior plans.
All right, so you've had one for two days a week?
Correct.
You want to go to five days a week. Does this mean this person would, you would not outsource a child, keep them in schools for this person to help manage, or no?
Well, I don't have a specific student to bring back as a result. What our hope would be is that, we have two things, that you would prevent students from having to leave the district because we would have a greater level of behavioral services. Right now, our BCBA, we contract with ACES for those services. And she spends the majority of her time at Jerome Harrison School and quite a bit of time at TVBS, supporting the Life Schools program. We'd like to expand her role to provide more time at each of the Bridges programs in our school district. She does consult with them, but she spends the majority of her time at those other two schools. And we feel that if we can prevent students from leaving the district, that's in our best interest. And as students from out-of-district placements are improving their behavior, if they were able to transition back to our district with the support of the BCBA, we would have a much better chance of being able to support them in that transition process, developing a plan to bring them back and then monitoring them. Because when you transition a student, you really need to monitor that very closely and make adjustments as a student returns so that we can preserve the skills that they've learned while being in private special education program, so that they can generalize those skills and train the staff to be able to support that student as they come back to our district.
Okay, so, let's try and understand. So your budget would be decreased by $66,000, but by hiring this person, about the $104,000, it's going to increase our budget about $40,000?
Correct.
And the hope would be, not that we need this person five days a week, but the hope would be that once you get her replaced, that we can work with the students and maybe not outsource as many and keep them in and defray the cost in the future?
And I just want to, I know that, you know, we mentioned two schools primarily where they work. If you could just speak to the, where you see two days a week, the, you know, opportunity to have them there potentially five days, what that would look like for you with the number of cases that you're seeing them dealing with now?
I can start with that. You know, our current situation may be more targeted at Life Schools program where there's plenty of support needed there. Contracting, you see, here, but we would love to see that a little expanded, a great Bridges program and very talented staff. But that's supported with a lot of staff, it's not captured too much in the diet collection piece, behavioral piece. Certainly, the students across the school with behavior needs that we're seeing. I know that's not even part of our school.
And that, just echo that, that very much to me that Jerome Harrison, too. The BCBA does a wonderful job working with our Bridges program, working with our social worker, working with our teachers. But with many of our younger students, they're really working on making their emotions, making their behaviors. And if we can have the BCBA really work with our behavioral R2I program and be able to help with students prior to them needing that extra support, I think that that would just really help them as they develop their years. Are the children that are out at these other schools, are they assessed at the end of the year to see if it's a possibility for them to come back? And with, if this position is filled, if it's not being done, is that something that will be done?
Every year, we do review a student program and every other district placement, at least once a year. I attend all that, and I stay in very close communication with those programs. And so we're always thinking about whether students can come back. Actually, I anticipated a student returning to the middle school this year and had made plans for January last year. Unfortunately, it wasn't successful, I have to say, for some period of time. But we have transitioned some students back into our goal. And doing something like that, we might use the BCBA to visit the students in the out-of-district program, see if they're having behavior problems, they're using beer, find out how we can replicate it, and then be able to coordinate the student transitioning. So they might transition for an hour to begin, half a day after that, and then extending their day to make sure that they're successful.
And you're seeing that there's an increase in the percentage of students that are coming with social, emotional reasons outside of just our Bridges program, our Life Schools?
So I really, I can't say that there's a guarantee that hiring this person's going to reduce our out-of-district costs. And, you know, I don't want to be disingenuous with you that the incidence of behavior, significant behavior issues or other social, emotional issues, whether it's aggressive or non-compliant behavior, or on the other side, we have lots of kids who are depressed and having difficulty in that area. So you have both sides of those points. Students are really struggling with many more issues in their lives, and that's not just Murphang, or certainly it's across the world. So this is certainly an effort that we would make to do everything that we can to maintain our students in our school. But I can't guarantee that it will result in those decreased costs. Certainly, it would be our hope and our desire to do that.
Don, just helping here. Like, what line item, if I were to look in the book, would the 66 come out and the 104 don't have that?
Well, the 104 is going to go into non-certified salaries. And the 66 is going to come out of the 330 line.
So the 66 is coming out of 330?
Correct.
And would you happen to know the number for the non-certified?
So on page 39, if you look at it, and just to be clear, the, the status quo budget does not include that reduction, nor does it include the money for BCBA. So if you look on page 39, at the top, on the third line down, you see it's going from 134 to 68.9, I think. So that's where that reduction shows up. Then on... On page, it's going to be 31. You'll see on the second line down, increase, now, there's actually two increases there. One is the behavior, BCBA, the other is an additional paraprofessional. So you can see the 1,200 line increases by about $97,000. And then again, if you go into the healthcare, health benefits, which is a couple pages back. And there's a small component in there that's going to be replicated as well. But the other major component is going to show up in 213, healthcare, the 1,200 line. And it's going from 314 to 333.
Is that, there's an 82 going to?
That was on page... 35. Any more questions up there? Keep going. Okay, so there's a small change in the energy line, 620. And that's about $18,000 because the price of natural gas has actually increased from the prior budget. We have instructional supplies increased by $34,000 to replace the loss of Title I funding. So if you look at the 34 in supplies and the 35 in non-certified salaries, that makes up for the $70,000 that we lost this year. And then we have enrollment. And the enrollment is decreasing by 15 in this projection. But that also does include a second pre-K classroom. So you can see on the, on the left side, the October 1st, which is the current, the pre-K is 15 and the projected total is 30. So the second preschool is in there, only as a placeholder. Do we have to approve that to add it? As you know, we currently have one with a Smart Start grant. A second class would have to be absorbed by board budget.
How does East Haven do with their Little Jockeys program that parents pay?
I know that, Tracy, you spoke extensively with...
East Haven gets quite a bit of funding from the federal state government. They not only get Smart Start, but they also get school readiness funding. So it's different. So they have different levels. They have parents that pay the full amount. They have an FRC, as we do. They have school readiness, which is a program completely funded. And then their Smart Start is partly funded. So they have... So, they have a tiered system. They have a home building with its own administrator dedicated to pre-K. So, I think the economy of scale is much different in East Haven than it is here.
Do they have the Care for Kids without the program now?
When it's available, they can receive funding. I don't know if they do because it hasn't been available for a decent amount. They didn't allow any families to add Care for Kids, and then they refunded it. So, I would assume, yes, it would be eligible for Care for Kids.
Do you know if they play a flat fee or is it per what they make a year's license?
If you receive Smart Start and school readiness, you have to go by the state scale, which is, again, it's a tiered system based on how much, the percentage of state meaning income that a family makes.
Okay.
Are we eligible for any of the, any additional grants for a pre-K program as opposed to...
We are not eligible for school readiness. So, Smart Start, we are eligible for, obviously, it's a competitive grant system, so we have to apply. There has not been new funding for Smart Start. So, if there happens to come up, we will absolutely apply, but it's been leveled. So, we are eligible to reapply for Smart Start. Our funding was granted for three years as in is any Smart Start grant. As of right now, they're still predicting funds to be available for me to reapply for until the year two thousand and twenty-four, I believe, to continue to get the seventy-five thousand for operation costs, which covers part of our teacher and the benefits.
The current, the current pre-K?
So, I can still continue to apply for that after the three years is up. And the expectation is as long as we continue to on with our accreditation process within N I A and receive that accreditation, that we would continue to receive that funding. I, Joe, they did not anticipate any new funding for this year, obviously, because of the state of the state, but if there does happen to become more funding available, we'll apply. And we should be eligible.
Are we allowed to charge for pre-K?
We are allowed to charge, again, on, based on that state scale. And I cannot charge people that meet their criteria for the reason we received the original Smart Start funding. So, it would be less than six students that we would charge. But F R C does charge on that scale because they charge everyone based on that scale. Where I would have to provide preschool at no charge to at least eight families.
Okay. And, and you get seventy-five thousand a year, what, what does the board, what's the board share of the left dollar? Seventy-five thousand doesn't cover the whole thing?
It does not. So, seventy-five thousand goes towards the salary of the person who's in there as well as benefits, and there's a para. I don't know off the top of my head what, what the costs of that are.
Well, and of course, the teacher that's there happens to be a fairly experienced teacher, and so her salary is above, I can certainly get that number for you. And then, the para is going to be in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range.
Right.
And then, plus, of course, the teacher has benefits.
Right.
Although in her case, I think it's actually buyout, so it's not as expensive.
It wasn't a new teacher that we put.
Right, yeah, no, no, I remember.
We assumed responsibility financially for, from the building itself.
Do we, do we also have to pay for continuing hours for those teachers as well or for...
It's professional development, just as we do now.
Okay.
So, that person is a teacher in our contract, so we are obligated by state law to provide a certain number of hours for professional development. Regardless, what we do is make sure that that person gets professional development that's specifically geared towards early childhood versus what I might provide in high school.
Got you.
Continue. So, I know you had a waitlist last year, right? Because there's only fifteen slots, right? I'm not sure if the next fifteen, if they didn't, if they were above the requirement to, for paying, would it be feasible, to piggybacking on Shauna's, would it be feasible to charge them for the services if they make a certain...
The difficulty becomes that I don't know that until after people register because we have to take their income into account. So, I would, it would be difficult to set a price and then say, okay, we'll see if we have people that fit that or not, because you have to do that prior to anyone applying.
Right.
And I also have, have a certain amount of students that meet the criteria for a Smart Start grant, which means I cannot charge them regardless.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, if you had a waiting list, I'm sure there were, there were waiting lists that, that could pay, but...
It's possible.
You'd have to know in advance because you couldn't say, oh, you're in the program, by the way, this is your, your cost.
Right. So, we would have to anticipate that, and then we would balance it with F R C because that is also a program run under the Board of Education umbrella. So, what I could do is look to them and talk about how would that be to service kids, meaning there's three and four-year-olds here, F R C, there's four-year-olds there, and we would have to go from there. I don't think that it would be, we would not be able to do that. We could charge. I just don't know at what level that would end up happening.
Right.
Because those are requests that we give people that don't meet the hundred percent criteria, those spots.
But with this extra classroom being Smart Start too, since it's not funding the complete one classroom, would this be under...
It would not. It would not have the same rules, but it, it would, because of the way F R C runs and Smart Start, I believe we would still have to use the scale because we do receive federal funds for preschool.
Yeah. No, I get the scale, but I'm just saying that you could feasibly charge all fifteen new members.
I could.
I'm just thinking in a, in a climate where we're looking at for a new high school and to redo, I'm calling it butterproofing because, but it's more than that, an auditorium, we're going to need to figure out how to balance our capital budget with our operating budget. So, if we could figure out a way to get the classroom and have it, at least bring in some revenue so that it's not solely being funded, that might be great. I don't know if you could maybe explore some options and bring that to us?
Sure. Absolutely.
Do you have a state contact person through Smart Start that you've worked directly with?
I do.
And I'm sure that person could...
And, and I do, I am familiar with the East Haven superintendent. We've worked on the preschool things together, so I'm sure she could explain to me how their system is continuing to work.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions on the projected enrollments or...
Now, the one thing I'll point out along on this slide because it's going to come up later is there is in the superintendent's request, a seventh grade-five teacher. So, that's why on that side, the projected staffing says seven and the class size is at twenty-one.
All right, before you click, so on the left-hand column, if you look at, under T V S, grade four, you have a hundred and fifty students enrolled in grade four currently with six teachers. So, there's twenty-five per class. If you slide to the right, you'll look at grade five, moving forward is where you see the seventh class.
So, those kids currently have six teachers?
Six teachers, and there's twenty-five in the class.
Yeah, yeah. So, what, as an administrator, as a teacher, what is kind of the sweet spot of classroom for that age group?
I can see that. So, I would say it's twenty-two would be a bad sweet spot.
Okay.
Once you have, the way that we instruct in workshop model, there are a lot of small groups, so that's a teacher to pull that extra group is getting changing.
Okay.
So, instead of having four groups of five, now you have five groups of five. That's a lot to manage without support. Additionally, one of the concerns I have that has come up the last couple of years is we often get no enrollments. So, that's not a static number. If we got five enrollments, you know, you're up in the class size advantage.
Okay.
And right now, in grade four, it's an extreme challenge for those teachers.
I was going to say.
High incidence, especially at that grade two, which adds to the problem of resources.
So, that drops them to about the twenty-one number?
So, if, you just said there's more special ed needs in that class?
Exactly.
So, if you had that extra teacher, the C B A, the...
V C B A.
Yeah, thank you. Would that add as a resource or would an extra teacher still be needed?
An extra teacher would still be needed, but most of the needs, well, not most, but a good amount of needs are academic in nature where the V C B A wouldn't be a support.
If you had to choose, what would be your priority since it's hitting your schools?
What would I choose? I would choose the grade-five teacher absolutely.
Okay.
We still have the two-day services included, meaning that we're operating with that, with the V C B A.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so if, if you went with the one teacher for grade five, don't do some numbers, you still have two days of V C B A.
Yeah, no, I get it.
That's the old, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. Just trying to figure out priorities as we're going through to see what it would look like.
What's the, for grade one, the five dash one, is that a teachers versus a...
Transition.
Transition?
Right, there's a transitional first grade, so there's actually five regular first-grade teachers and one transitional first grade teacher. This is something we haven't talked about yet, is an additional social worker at the Jerome Harrison, so it's not that level, that you're currently sharing the social worker. And if you look in your, on the handout, just a bar in there. Obviously, we're not going to span here beneath this too, but it's, this was a justification that you can take with you and, and look over.
And I don't know whether, but I think if, because it's, we're too long of these schools with Suzanne here, if you could speak to current staffing levels with social workers, how are you functioning now and why you both feel, or petition to your events? Suzanne, would you talk about, instead of reading through this, that's just a comment.
So, I would start, historically, the Becker Valley is having full-time social workers. And this year, is it shared position between the Becker Valley and Jerome?
Is there a twelve-month or a ten-month?
It's a ten-month. Yeah. So, the basic role of social working elementary school is varied and huge. So, there's a lot of supportive leader here, there's a lot of supportive emotion, there's curriculum instruction, the classrooms around social emotional learning, which is something that we want more of now. There's the huge involvement throughout the P T and special ed process. There's counseling with kids that have special ed caseload and kids that don't. We have kids, as Suzanne mentioned, with all kinds of behavioral and pain needs coming to our schools, so kids in crisis get that first of the services. So, to have a reduction in our schools is a big issue this year, to have a couple of kids who have first kids not there. You know, the impact, the kids who need that, kids who are in crisis, you can't just call the other school and say, I'll send her back, we need her today. So, it's just, it's a difficult position to share. It's not effective. Having worked at Jerome previously, I absolutely advocated for the need of social worker there as well. So, it's important, any increase in the need, I think, of the five issues of the, and drop of social.
Developmentally, is this the time to kind of have the social worker in? Like, it's something that you kind of teach skills that carry on?
Absolutely. This is the time, and you know, the developmental age, pre-K five, is the time that you can really help to develop those regulation skills, those social emotional skills, when you're feeling frustrated, those coping skills. I mean, the social worker position in both buildings is, it's so important, it truly is. And I know that Jerome Harrison, how many years ago, six or seven, Jerome Harrison did have a full-time school psychologist and a full-time social worker. Jerome Harrison lost a full-time social worker of six or seven years ago, I would say, and just went to a full-time school psychologist. And someone who was in that position as a full-time school psychologist back then, I can tell you, it was a very needed position and, and one that really needed to do more than, than what had been done at that time. Moving to the Bridges program that we did a few years ago has helped significantly in terms of addressing those emotional behavioral concerns. But again, the social worker can really work on those coping skills and more of those preventative strategies to help a student be able to work through emotions before the aggressive or inappropriate behavior happens, which is so, so important.
So, ideally, it would be nice to have another one. What if the budget is such that, right now, you're sharing, like, do they have a part-time social worker? Is that something that, if, if we had to cut and could only give a part-time, would that work or...
Well, that's...
Because you're working with one and one for both schools.
Correct.
What if you couldn't hide, if you...
So, if you moved one to just one school?
One school, then have a, have a part-time one at the other school.
Additional social work services would be better than...
Anybody that...
Right, so, but that could be a possibility. I, I don't know what the budget's going to end up, so I'm just trying to come up with some scenarios that we could service the kids. Because I heard a rumor, I don't, that our new governor wants to cut funding for the schools at a certain number or something. I, I don't know all the details, but it didn't sound good. So, I know we got slammed before, and I'm just concerned that if we get slammed again, how do we service our kids?
So, this, just to ask this, in this environment now, we know that we just posted recently for the school psychologist position, and we get it extensively through a couple of different agencies, and we ended up having to bring in a social worker. Are there a number of social workers out there in the higher-end queue, or do you see it being something where we're going to struggle if it's a part-time position? And is it, it's got to be different than the school psychologist position?
Yes, the school psychologist is one of the, is probably the greatest shortage area in Connecticut, so trying to fill a position for a school psychologist who weren't successful to it yet, it's on the month of the year. We're hoping that we'll be able to fill that for next year, but it's a worry that we have. There are already, I think, twenty or thirty school psychologists postings for next year, so it'll be, and they don't graduate very many students from college programs this year. So, that's a concern. Social workers is a larger, much larger pool, so there may be opportunities for folks who are half-time. We may consider it injured, and I think that certainly the need is great and the need is there, but we would appreciate any additional services and we'll make it work.
I'm sorry, what exactly is the difference between psychologist versus the social worker? Like, what is the difference in their degrees? I, I...
The school psychologist is my best one.
I just say, I don't have any, I know. Fair enough, yeah.
So, I guess, to boil it down, the school psychologist can do evaluations. So, can do evaluations in regards to cognitive evaluations, behavioral evaluations, and then present those evaluations in a P P T meeting to determine whether or not a student requires special education services.
Okay.
A school social worker cannot do part of those evaluations, particularly the cognitive evaluations and memory evaluations. They can do evaluations in regards to social, emotional, and behavioral, such as the integrative skills, observations, they can assist with functional behavior assessments, however it was typically done by the V C B A or the school psychologist. So, the, the school psychologist can, I guess, do more in regards to the evaluation piece as well as the counseling piece. That said, as a school psychologist who, when you do have a lot of evaluations to conduct, really giving the counseling piece its due does not always happen.
Right.
So, having the social worker who can really focus in on those counseling skills, those coping skills, and like, working with the children to develop those skills is huge.
So, you'd say social workers are more hands-on, psychologist is more, sort of, more observational and writing reports?
Testing. Testing. Okay.
It depends, but in a, in a school where there might be a high amount of testing that needs to be completed, that's just what happens. The school psychologist can very much be hands-on, but the evaluations do need precedence. I mean, that is another line.
Right, and they're the only ones who could do that part?
Correct.
Okay.
And to outsource this testing, it's very expensive.
Right, so, the, because there's not so many psychologists, you have a PhD for being a psychologist?
No, you don't have.
Okay, so, so why are there so many? I guess my question is, why are there so few psychologists versus social workers? Is that just how it is in Connecticut? I mean, I'm just curious.
Well, the school psychologist has to do a whole one-year unpaid internship, so their, their graduate program is, is more lengthy, and so, I, I don't know, and I think a lot of people really prefer to have their, that have the hands-on opportunities with students rather than doing testing, so there aren't going to be as many people who are interested in that part of the job. As a district, we need to certainly have people who are able to test and do counseling. Social workers also do a lot of work with families. Again, not just the parents, cannot, certainly do that.
Right.
Social workers have more, I would say, training, in working with families, helping them to get, we look up with agencies or other providers that might provide outside support. So, it's a, certainly, it's preferable to have both in a school because they provide really nice services that are blended together.
Would you consider a master's level social worker now?
Yes.
So, in thinking, trying to think creatively, I think I know the answer to this, but to, to hire somebody part-time, because the benefits are what's going to, you know, drive costs up ridiculously, but to hire somebody part-time, that's kind of hard to do because most of the time you have to go through an agency, right? And you pay agency fees and everything else, which is exactly why you're asking to bring, probably to bring somebody in full-time as a V C B A as opposed to part-time. as a VCPA as opposed to part-time.
Well, VCPA services would be even different, I'd say, that while we contract for VCPA services, it's really only been recently that folks are working for school districts full-time as VCPAs, and it will become a certification area shortly, because the state Department of Education is looking at making it a certification area. For a social worker, whether, I think that you could hire them part-time, and wouldn't necessarily have to contract with an agency, school psychologist, because they're a shortage area, if you can't find one, you may need to contract with an agency, that would be more likely than having to contract for a social worker. I don't really know what the pool is for half-time folks, but I would say it's more lengthy.
But a part-time social, a part-time social worker would still be a certified teacher under our contract, they simply wouldn't work, one FTE, they would be something less than that.
What about an intern?
Well, an intern would not, I mean, that would be a different story. And down with our two's contract, 50% qualifies them for benefits, so it'd have to be, it'd have to be less than 50% to not have to be a...
Right, because that's why we've had teachers that have been point six, and it's really not a huge, um...
Right, because you're paying them.
Right, it wasn't really a huge adjustment to bring them up to full-time, because we were already paying for the benefits.
Is the word getting out there, I mean, the word got out there, the shortage areas for math and science, is the word getting out there for school psychologists that, hey, there's jobs available?
If you're a high school physics teacher, you can write your ticket.
Yeah.
Suzanne, which schools have a psychologist?
Well, every school has a psychologist position, right now, we got our school psychologist at Jerome Harrison resigned in December, and our school psychologist at the Indiana School also resigned this year.
Right, okay, so each one is in the book for one full-time already?
Yeah.
We just have two vacant floors. Right, right.
Retired psychologist who's coming in with excessive force. I guess we're down two. And I did, just for the sake of clarity, for the, for the purpose of the budget, I carried the two people who left forward as if they were...
That's what I was looking at, I'm like, I see it and I don't see it.
So, yeah, because obviously, the higher rate is the rate that those two are at. Any other questions before we go on? I did the maximum request because it's grade five, we've already, no, this is a preschool, and I, so I've already talked about this a fair amount, and where is the justification in your faculty? So, with what Tracy explained to you, for adding additional, we can move guessing through this slide, and we discussed that, and then your explanation that you have in front, you speak to, and tell us, do you have any questions about the preschool or the charge of asking East Bay for their funding formula, how they do it, if we could do it, if we were to call our state person?
I would, I would suggest, and this is just my, my opinion, but it could be self-funded, if these positions can be self-funded by the increase in the program, that is probably a way to make it move as opposed to coordinated.
So what I'm hearing is, we're gonna call the state and see that if we were to add 15 seats to our pre-K, are we able to charge, and go on a sliding scale or a full scale, does the makeup of the class have to be identified or not?
Right.
And how that would work?
Right, and then how much, basically, we want to weigh how much the preschool teacher and the preschool parent will cost in comparison to the income that we can get.
They would have to come across.
But if you have, yeah, because you don't know what the income level was.
I don't think, it would be difficult, like, honestly, to have 15 students for a teacher and a parent, but if we want to add classes and restrictions, we'd be under, but, I mean, we could absolutely...
I'd rather have the data and say, right, yeah.
Absolutely, we could, I know.
Or they might say, hey, there's this new grant you didn't know about, I don't know.
All right, so the numbers are a little bit small, but I'm looking, I think it's 70,000 for the teacher and 18,000 for the parent, for your PPD, just for...
Does that include benefits for the teacher?
No, that includes benefits for the teacher, and the parent would probably not be eligible for that.
So you said 70 for the teacher and what was the parent?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
And there's room in, and this is the building?
Yes.
By Jerome Harrison?
Yeah.
We have two 24-seat classrooms in that FRC building in the back, so one is being occupied, one for FRC.
I remember discussion, I think, with the grant, wasn't there, was there a stipulation of having to do the covered walkway or something?
There, as part of the grant, we wrote, we did request funding for that and received it, the stipulation is that the students be protected during weather, it does not have to be done, but that's what that money is allocated for, if there was a reason for me to change that, for some reason, I have to go through the state to ask for that.
Has that started, or the money's allocated?
We already asked.
Yeah, it's been out right now, it was redesigned because it was over the cost of what we had, we made a mistake, so it went back, it goes here, if you have any specific questions, the engineer redesigned it, so it's basically just a straightaway between the two, to try to simplify and get the cost down. The thing that complicates it is that we can't attach it to the building because of the fire.
Fire. So it has to be freestanding for both?
Has to be freestanding, freestanding, and so that's what's been, that's what's been problematic with it, because it raises the cost, because you have to have a freestanding structure.
So basically, at $90,000, 15 students, 6,000 students, for the pre-K, to make it wash itself.
Well, that's just for the teachers too, I mean, do you have other costs, like, materials and supplies? Yeah.
Any other questions on preschool and Jerome? All right, so there's the grade five teacher, we've already spoken about, if there's any more questions about that, we roll on grade five, do it? The VCPA, we've already spoken about that, and then this is the three additional parent professionals, two on the instructional side for support literacy in math, and one additional special education parent professional. Questions on those parent professionals?
So this is all in addition, so this would be at the superintendent's budget?
Yes. Yeah, these are all guaranteed. Yeah, these are not in the status quo.
So what I would like the administrators to really think though, because the reality of getting the superintendent's budget is not a reality, it's not, and I don't mean to be doomsdaying, but we are looking at some really big projects, our high school is very tired, and it's all all on the taxpayer, so we have to figure out how to balance our curriculum and our operating with these capital projects. When you're looking at these requests, and I can't say any of them are bad or frivolous, because they're not, but when you're looking at a budget, I would love it if you could look at your budgets and say, all right, I do really need these two teachers, but I could trim from here, and that would make up for the two teachers, so we could almost flatline, because the reality is, we will probably get a flatline, they, we don't typically, right, Marsha, we can't get the low we got unless there's, unless there's enrollment.
Right, there's, there's like a big decline in enrollment, then there's a formula, but typically...
Then there's a formula, but I think we're okay on that, don't hold me, so the reality is, we will probably flatline, so look at your current budgets, your requests, your operating, and what can be tweaked, because you might think some of this is more important than what you currently have, and might want to shift some things around, but just think about that when you're coming back, or maybe there's grants out there that can support some of this, so that we can, I mean, I want our school district to be one of the premier school districts, but all of the funding isn't gonna come from the town, so we have to be creative on how to do that, and figure out how to get, I mean, Tracy, you're like a whiz with these grants, I don't even know how you write them, but that's, I mean, that's what I think we need to look more up, so that we can still do what we want to do, and push forward, and have the reality of it, because what I hate to do is talk about all these great things, and you have them all in mind, and then come back and, you know, may and say, yeah, no, let's, let's go back to the drawing board, let's be more proactive and think about it.
And really, this is, you know, this is pretty much for two of the schools, two out of four of the schools, all the needs right now.
Suzanne? What, what is a social worker's salary?
I don't know why, put it in there.
Because, I mean, we had in the budget for two psychologists, but, I mean, you know, if there's a given a take...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, I, I would love to hear what the administrators can do, they know, they know, they're like the experts in their field, so like, what can they do with the budget, like, say you have a blank slate, this is your final money pot, what do you want to do with it?
So I put the social worker in at 85,000.
And that includes benefits?
That includes benefits.
What line is that?
That's actually, there's a, unfortunately, it is a little bit of a night test, I mean, the line would be 2113 in the 111 account, but if you also, where I'm getting this number from is on page 17, because there's a summary at the bottom with new requests and changes, and it totals across and includes personnel and benefits.
Thank you.
Before we leave this page, Suzanne, on the bottom it says add one special education parent professional, is this more of a one-on-one parent, or have the numbers increased?
No, it's intended for, to Tucker Valley Elementary School because of the increase in the students in the Bridges program there, as well as we have a large number of students in grade four this year that have been recently identified, so there are almost 20 students in grade four, so they traveled, we're struggling with it right now, we're just making some changes in scheduling and classrooms to try to provide that support for them, but it will continue to be challenging. That person, that, that parent professional would be shared.
So you would, you would split up the, the kids between the different, the regular classrooms, and the parent would be within the classroom, do you have parents, you said fourth grade, do you have, so that would be going to fifth, so this parent would be the new fifth grade teachers parent, is that?
Well, we have one parent professional in fourth grade and one parent professional in fifth grade now, and we try to keep them high level specific, but honestly, we really look at what the needs on our school are, so parent professionals are assigned to the building, and many of them are shared, I mean, so, for example, now the fourth grade, things have been much busier for that group, so maybe get the parent professionals and special education teachers together and say, in this block of the day, is there someone that can help to support this classroom, and so we've done that, it contributes to the significance. So personally, we'd likely not be assigned to one particular place, but really, each year, we look at the needs of the school and assign people where they need it.
Okay, okay. So in front of staff requests, these, are, is this in order of need?
So here, let's, we'll simplify it, so right now, with the superintendent's budget, you're asking for, for certified people, you're asking for a grade five teacher, because your 150 are currently being serviced by six, and you're being asked to, for the seventh, so there's one certified teacher, you're asking for, we're asking for one social worker right now to service the two buildings, the behavior VCPA person, which would offset the 66,000 of 40, 40,000 there to do the benefits piece, so those are the three certifying pieces, those... The other, actually, the pre-K teacher is certified, the VCPA is not yet certified, or not yet a certification. So, so you have the pre-K, which we don't have now, okay, we don't have that pre-K now, right now, so those positions, those three certified plus the VCPA, plus the additional parent instructional pieces, so if you're saying that, you want us to look at, look at just the flatline budget, or to remove those, or are you saying, get the dollar value each position, so let's use...
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, just to be clear, what I'm saying, you're, you're not gonna get a superintendent budget, we know this, when was the last time you got one?
We never have.
Okay, so it's, it's an exercise in humility that we don't need to go through again.
But the question is, what budget are you gonna bring forward?
What I think we should bring forward is a status quo and a flatline, but what I want them to look at is look at the status quo budget with their priorities, and I'm not saying these aren't the priorities, because you can ship the money, you know what you have now, look at what you would do with a, a status quo, and then look at what you would do with a flatline, because what I don't want to happen is, our budget comes black flatline, which it most likely will, and in the reality, I mean, when I first came off the board, I was like, oh yeah, let's go for it, that's not smart, because that's not gonna happen, we need to be better prepared than that, so look at your program, things shift over time, and take it almost from scratch and build it up again, and say, all right, this is how my population changed, you have a, a fourth grade that's larger and has more issues than some of the other classes perhaps, and that class is gonna age, right, like, how are we, how are we looking at our schools in totality, and how are we growing with them, and how are our resources changing, are they the same, do they work now, do we need to do it, and I know it's a lot of work, but it, it might save us money, it might be a little bit more money, but then at the next lesson, you can say, hey, this is, this is what we really need, and then it'll be our job to kind of like, find where to pull it from, but I, you're the experts in your school, we don't live there like you do.
The experts, for clarification, built this budget area, so if you have a number... If you have a number that you think, you know the council's gonna give us, that would be very...
I don't, what I'm saying is, it's not gonna be...
And you're saying it's zero, then we'll go back and start to work on the zero budget.
I, I would advise doing a flatline budget, and if we got anything more, that's a blessing, but I would, I would be realistic and work on a flatline budget, we are asking for a high school, and we are asking for that weatherproofing, waterproofing, and we're gonna have to balance the capital money and the operating budget, it's all coming from the citizens.
But I don't think, I don't think we should ask for a zero.
I'm, I'm working circle with...
We'll put, we'll put in one, but I want them to be prepared for...
Right, no, I understand. If you plan for zero and you get more, it's a bonus, so figure out where there's extra money that you can...
I understand what you're asking, because there's always extra money somewhere.
I understand what you're asking them to do, but what are we comfortable with going forward with at this point?
I think we should go for, because we always submit three budgets, I think we should...
Well, we do, we don't do a flatline, we do status quo, so if you want me to do status quo...
I say we do status quo and flatline, and so they can see that we're being physically responsible, because in the climate, we're possible future budget cuts, and we need a high school.
But we're not gonna ask for a zero, right? We're not gonna ask for the...
We're gonna ask for the status quo and be prepared for the zero.
Okay, so the status quo number is what you're saying?
I think it's important, though, when you, when you stay the zero, and then your administrative team comes back with their recommendation, that weighs very heavily on what the board is gonna do with their recommendations, because a great deal of time and energy now goes in, and when you're, when you're fighting for your building, when you're fighting for your school, you're fighting for your programs, and you're taking four different buildings to come down to what they prioritize in moving the district forward, I, I want it to be...
That's what I'm saying, I want it to be heard.
The things that are on that board right now are very important, they wouldn't be up there if they were not important to...
I'm not saying not, but they're not gonna get them realistically, all of them, so let's, let's figure it out.
That's why I was asking for the number, if you have a number that the council has sent to you...
No, they didn't say anything to me, but what I'm saying is, put forth a number that you know, I mean, we're gonna go, we're gonna present, status quo, it will probably be flatline, be prepared for that flatline, that's the budget you wanna live with, that's the budget you're gonna need to move forward with a little slightly, what, do you want these positions, do you want a different position, can you not, I don't, I don't know what you need, you know what you need, but that's what's gonna happen, so what will happen if, if you don't choose, we choose, and then we're all up here bickering, because we don't really know, we're, we're putting our own priorities in, but we don't really live in your lives day to day, we don't see those children, we don't see how they interact with you, we don't see who needs more need, what grade needs more support, we don't see any of that, so we're doing the best we can, and kind of throwing it up in the air based on our own opinions, but if you're prepared with a flatline budget, if we sit in a status quo and it comes black flatline, there is no argument, because we overvoted on it, and said, yep, this is what the budget, we will go on, and we've already agreed on it, we've already heard you, we've had an opportunity to ask our questions, and we are not backed into a corner to meet the deadline, I, I want you to run our schools, I don't want to run your schools, yes, do I come in and look at water every now and again? Yeah, why? Just because I wanna know, I wanna see it with myself, what you're living with, so that, that's what, I think all of these things are valuable, but what is gonna be the most valuable in your lives, and to the lives of the kids?
How can you put those in and manage the budget at status quo?
Right, right, right.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna remove other...
Not necessarily.
No, they're not, they're gonna choose, they're gonna...
Where all the other money is.
If your status quo did just flatline out at that amount, to get it to zero, you're changing, you're changing out...
No, things will have to be...
There's instructional, there's postage, there's, there's so many things in the budget that I'm sure if, if you looked at it, I don't, like, Sean, I don't know, I don't run the school systems, I'm not in there, but there's so many different line items in the budget, see where you can trim something.
Done, going back to the page of flatline, so everybody understands the dollar amount, at 2.18... At two point one eight, status quo is six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Correct.
So what we're looking to do is we're going to reduce six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to get down to where we're currently at this year. So it's, I want everyone to understand the numbers. That six hundred thousand dollars, that equates to approximately two percent.
Yep.
So two point how many?
Two point one eight.
Two point one eight, I just said that. So how many employees per percentage?
Well, I mean, we use a rough number is six teachers per percent. Because the savings for a teacher is not quite the same as the cost for a teacher because you have to figure in unemployment.
But why does it have to be a teacher?
Well, it doesn't.
It could be something else.
I'm saying.
It's sort of just a rule of thumb. Six hundred something thousand dollars, you're, you're not going to get it in postage stamps.
No, you're not.
You're not going to get it. And let's be clear here, you're not going to get it.
Scott, under it, so would you rather say, go forward and put it in, but you still have to make that cut anyway? So be prepared.
Present the budget, if you feel good about.
You're not going to get a superintendent's budget. I could get like.
If the council says to us and we stand before them and say, this is what's important to the district. As a board, we're here to fight for the kids in this school district. And this is the number that we think is responsible. Whatever number that is, and the council says you're getting one percent, we come back to the drawing board. We take that one percent, we redesign the model and the plan.
That report has not been working for you so far.
We bring it back to you. That's how it works every time.
But it doesn't work. Last year, we were all arguing like fools. I don't want to do that. I'd rather be prepared. I'd rather be proactive than reactive.
I like that. We were arguing because, because there was, we were trying to pick and choose. Instead of taking their recommendations of what they came to us with to get to that dollar amount, we were, we were picking and choosing.
So why don't we do that ahead of time instead of on the back end?
But that's what she's saying.
No, what you're saying, well, let's not just say teachers.
Why does it have to be teachers? I mean, they might say teachers. They might say, you know what, it's six teachers. We don't need six teachers. They might say, I don't need, I don't know. I don't know what you need or you don't need, is my point. But why are you automatically assuming teachers?
I think that you're using that as a guide. It's just teachers.
Because.
But it could be anything, it doesn't need to be.
We're looking at staffing levels. We're looking at retirements potentially. We're looking at a new schedule between buildings. If there's a cost savings there, we're able to do it by staff leaving us and not rehiring, that's one thing. If that doesn't happen, and we don't get retirees, six hundred thousand dollars is six hundred thousand dollars.
I just think that's not creative and I think our staff is more intelligent than that.
Well, I think if you look for.
To be creative with budgets.
If you look through the slides and you see reduction in staff over time and where we were, you're going to see the staffing numbers have gone down significantly with enrollment. We're at a part right now where we're seventeen hundred people, we're retaining that level. So it's a tall task for us to ask them to come up with six hundred thousand dollars.
But they're going to have to anyway.
I'm saying, let the council bring them.
I disagree with you. But we can vote on it, we can vote on it.
Bring something forward. You're going to have to eventually do it anyway.
Isn't it our job to fight for what kids need? It's our town council tells us no, they tell us no. We're not saying, I'm not saying this is irresponsible. I'm not going to fight for something irresponsible. But if this is what our kids need, it's our job. We took an oath to do what the kids need. If the town council comes back and says you don't get the money, then we deal with it. But that's our job.
I disagree with the interpretation of our job.
But I, but I think.
You're on the board of A.
That's right. We're also supposed to monitor the budget and make sure that our kids get what they need through a fiscally responsible way. We know we're not getting the superintendent's budget, so why are we wasting time with that? We need to pass a budget that is.
Why do we all talk? I mean, whatever, you're right all the time. So I'll just eat my matcha, because Sean's right. Last year, they came forward with recommendations of where they were going to cut the money. And we sat here and we said, no. Oh, you're telling us that's where you've cut the money? No, we're going to cut it here instead. No, we're going to do this. And, and don't say we didn't do that.
We did, Marcy, I'm going to agree with you.
We, we did. And you're asking them to go back and say what they.
That's why, because you know, I was a new chair, Marcy, and I've learned over time. I've also learned from my mistakes. And I know I don't have the heart to go imprison a superintendent's budget because I don't think that works. But I do want to present a budget that I think can pass, that we can agree on and we can hear them and that they're doing the work we can understand.
So I'm asking you, if they're going to come back with recommendations, we're going to listen to that more seriously.
But I think the staff is arguing that.
Yes, that's what we are.
The administrators felt that these were important positions.
But this is, this is.
And if we look out there and they stand behind it and you believe they're important.
It's not going to get passed. The superintendent's budget is not going to get passed.
What's this superintendent's budget?
It is, but this is definitely.
This is status quo, that means no decisions.
Well, I'm just saying, because I want, well, I talked enough people talking, I'm talking, that's all. And I want to be polite and not just object.
Thank you.
But our bylaws are very clear. To consider and adopt the annual budget prepared by the superintendent of schools. So we need for them to give us what their budget is going to be. After they give us what their budget is going to be, then we will talk about all the line items. But to go in and say that we don't want to go in and fight town council and we don't want to do this, that's not our job to do that right now. Our job according to the bylaws are to consider and adopt the superintendent's proposed budget.
We are the superintendent's boss essentially. We overlook the budget and we see it. Not that I'm saying we need to.
Dude, it's not like the boss.
But it's, it's.
We said our job.
No, that's my, I think the wrong word.
And what you're saying to administration is that this is not relevant to what they feel is important. This is not.
That is not what I'm saying. What I am saying is.
I'm getting that she thinks that all these are viable additions and that in a perfect world, we present it and it goes through. But it's, it's, it has history. It's not going to go through. You're going to get cut. And I think what she's asking is that also think of, all right, so already have in your head, in perfect world, we get it, but if we don't, like, would you cut the pre-K teacher and para? Would that be the first one to not?
Well, we don't have it right now.
We don't have it right now.
But you have it in the budget.
But I'm saying, status quo is six hundred thousand dollars. So we have to back out, forget that entire slide. None of that goes forward. We have to take what we currently have and go back six hundred.
No, you don't, Scott. Status quo is a six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So if you're doing a status quo budget, you keep everything you have. That's what status quo means. You keep everything you have. You would have to, if you went to a flatline budget, then you have to cut six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
You're saying that we're not going to get status quo.
We probably won't, but cut it to status quo. That's what we want. And think about your flatline.
What I heard was, you want us to go back to, to cut to a zero.
Right now, I want this, I want to present. We are not most likely going to get status quo. We will present status quo.
That's what she said.
But you need to be prepared for your flatline.
So with status quo, when we come back, the recommendation administration, what I'm hearing, everyone's nodding their head, is that that's what's going to be brought forward.
That's what we'll vote on because we'll have, that will be our number. But the super.
Based on the work of the administrative team as experts bringing forward a budget, that that's what you're going to support, not what you might think is what we can get rid of.
Right. But is there a way to have status quo incorporate one or two of these things? Like, how can you incorporate these into status quo and trim the budget somewhere else? So we're still at status quo, but you can get, we can get a couple of the things that are important. So how can we, how can you guys be creative to get these things incorporated into the status quo budget?
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're carrying all the benefits and everything forward. You know what things we can eliminate. So it has to be aside from contractual obligations and all of that. So I don't care whether it's going to be what the number's going to be. So we'll come back and show you.
But you know, like the next, the next meeting, I would love, obviously, we know status quo and what a flatline would look like, so we're prepared. Like, hey, this is what, this is what it might look like. This is what we ideally want in status quo. This is how we're tweaking it to make it look like this. This is what would happen if it was flatline. That way, either budget we get, we can pass it the next day because it won't matter because we already are prepared.
I just have a hard time with the charge of providing and doing what's best for the entire district, K-12. And that, I don't think we're frivolous by any means. And you can look at any data check on per people and all of that with what our needs are.
When was the last time you got a superintendent's budget passed?
I'll get you all that information.
I'm just wanting to know, five years, ten years? I'm just curious. Five years, ten years, two years?
I have to go back and I'll give you all of that.
Has it been in the last decade?
I don't know, Don.
Don, when was the last time a superintendent's budget passed?
I honestly don't recall, but it's been a while.
Five years, a while, ten years?
Well, it wouldn't surprise me if it was ten.
Okay. Okay, so the reality of.
So a superintendent's budget.
Yeah.
Right. So if you ask for three point two and you get two point five, you're still above, you're still above status quo.
There.
You are. It is.
When was the last time you got a status quo budget?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't know.
I think that data is important as well.
I can tell you that. But that doesn't relinquish our responsibility to fight for our kids.
It doesn't, but it's also.
It's true, we're not listening, that we're not listening, is what it says. We are not listening to what's going on. So we're not going to get it and we're going to prepare.
I don't think it's, I don't think we're being irresponsible. I think we're being responsible. I think the educators here are putting together numbers that are responsible based on the needs and what they see every day of their challenges.
How about we do an exercise, Scott? Have them put together their status quo and their flatline. And then we can vote on all three budgets. That's what we're going to present. So as a board, we can vote for the superintendent, whether we're going to present it, the status quo and the flatline.
We should never bring forward a flatline.
We're not, but we should go on if that will pass now. So we know that we agree on it. So if it comes to pass, it's, we will do that. And because that, you know, that's.
Here's the problem, and I understand your theory, but here's the problem. Once we get our number, we don't have to finalize our budget until June thirtieth.
But this was last year though.
But wait, but wait, wait, wait. We hope and pray, if our number's really bad, we hope and pray for retirements. So we don't want to agree to a certain budget that they're going to bring forward and then we get a ninety thousand dollar retirement that maybe we don't have to replace that we could shift around. See, that's the problem with bringing forward, you know, something like that too soon because we wait and see what we get for retirements.
Well, how about we just vote on the status quo that we present? We'll, we'll vote on what we're presenting to the board, to town council.
What do you mean?
Well, we have to vote on it. Scott can't just go present a budget. We have to.
Right, yeah. You have to approve it before.
That's what I'm saying. So that's what I'm saying. So we, we decide whether we vote on, yes, the superintendent's budget will be presented. I mean, we'll just vote on it. I mean, that's the easiest way instead of arguing about it is to vote on it.
So do you feel we need another meeting?
Yeah, because I want to see what the budget looks like.
All right, when's our next?
Well, we.
February seventh.
February seventh.
That one.
Not next week.
It's February.
No, it's, it's two weeks.
It's February. It's right at the bottom of the page. But yeah, I want to see what they would present, so we're prepared. I really do.
Does everyone finish with this slide?
Yes, I am.
Don, next slide.
So ironically, we talked about ramps. And I put this up there in large part to make sure to, basically as a reminder that all of these additional staff and programs are being funded entirely through the SIG grant. And so, and I guess SIG grant is repetitive, huh?
It is.
The SIG. So these are things that we are able to get through the grant that are not impacting the board budget. But just in case you hear, oh, you know, there's an ELA coach at NBIS, this would be how it's being paid for.
How long do we have the spending for? Three years?
Three years.
So this will go into our second year?
This is implementation year one, then we get implementation year two next year and the follow-up year is implementation year three.
And do you have opportunity to reapply for that grant? Or is it a three-year and then you better fly?
It's three years and then there may be a different grant, but it will not be this grant.
Okay.
So worst case scenario, in that third year, you have to decide if you want to keep constructional coaches or not in your budget because the grant will.
So this, the headcount information is already in your book, so I don't think it's worth trying to.
Well, I think it's important to screen just that. If you look over the last ten years on the front line, top line, the regular certified teachers, including library diacritics and grant funders, ten years ago, is that one fifty-four, five five eight. Those are FTEs, they're now at one twenty-nine. So over time, Don's going to show you the slide, you're going to see what has been reduced from the teaching staff. We've had additional security, as you are aware, in all of the buildings and the greeters. So those make up primarily the difference at the bottom. This will be the declines here.
Right.
So this was last year.
So these are just some of the things that we've done in order to reduce our, our budget. Last year, it was a K-five music teacher, a NBIS classroom teacher, a world language physician at the high school. And we also moved six paras into Title One. Now, of course, the, the budget request pulls some of those paras back into the board budget. The year before that, it was a grade-two teacher, a math teacher, some athletic coaches. And we also, and this is, when we got the Smart Start grant, we did not hire a new teacher. We, we pulled that, or we did not hire a new para professional, rather, we pulled that out of another position. And then this is the year before that. This is where we actually reduced the number of workdays. You can see we eliminated a number of teachers that year and a number of para professionals, cut some clerical time and eliminated a custodian. So, and this is the, as I said, this is something that we always put up there just sort of as a, as a ballpark. You're certainly right, it doesn't all have to come from teaching staff. But it's sort of just a barometer of what is required, what would be required if it all come from teaching staff. And to a large extent, if it was other staff, it would probably be a similar number. And finally, capital. What's included here is additional funding. We have, we've been allocated twenty-five thousand dollars for the study for the high school. We actually think in order to do what's currently on the table, it's going to be closer to fifty. So this adds twenty-five to that. We do have an, I'll say this, Bill, we have a working elevator right now, right? So yeah, we have a working elevator right now. But this was the, this was a ballpark number that Bill had gotten to do some of the, because the control system, it's not the hydraulics, the pump, the cab, but the control system is basically obsolete.
And we need this for handicap accessibility.
Have to have.
I, I thought there was another elevator that was, would be feasible to use.
We have to go outside to the auditorium, up to the second floor and then wheel the student across. That's the only elevator out there. So that's what we were doing. It was the motherboard that we were able to send out, have sent out and they resurfaced, reconnected, redirected and then put the same keys back in and it worked luckily. So, but we have the student that we were leaving the building, going to the auditorium, second floor. That's the only elevator.
Um, so we have additional funding for the exterior brick at the auditorium. What I did is, we had got, we received a quote for $155,000. I actually increased that by 3% and then subtracted the $48,000 that we've already been allocated. So this, again, this would be to do the entire job, including both the waterproofing, the repointing that's necessary. And then Totucket Valley is asbestos and to continue unit ventilator replacements. Jerome Harrison, there are some issues with the air conditioning system, cooling tower and compressor. It's hard to believe, but that building is about 20 years old now. And then the last one is, and this is something that we had done in the past, is to create a paving reserve. So we start putting money in, so then we, when we have an issue that we need to address with paving, hopefully you have a reserve built up, built up that you can do it. I don't know whether the, is Totucket Valley the worst?
That's
Yeah, so
The building's a little bit bad too, just a big round this recent, some lessons from the auditorium.
So historically for the capital budget, I know they won't approve 431, right? Cause everybody's putting in for their capital budgets, right? Like what does that normally look like?
This is the one budget that we, that in the past, we've just submitted everything because the town council has line item veto on this, so they can pick and choose.
Do we prioritize or do we just give it as
They sometimes have asked us for our priority order and we've done that. The other budget, they don't get to pick and choose line items, they just give us a dollar amount. And in the past, other boards, we've had discussions where we don't wanna pick and choose because what if they were willing to do this or, and we didn't submit it? So we submitted the whole list and they can pick and choose whatever they feel they have the money for to give us to do.
Can, would it behoove us to probably put it in priority order for us?
It would not hurt. And when I can
We can certainly do that.
And the reserve we're never gonna get.
Well, so the reserve can stay where it is. I was just thinking, like, we really wanna make sure we get the money for the feasibility studies. And then, I don't know where you find the, you know, where you place the rest of it.
We have the, but we can certainly have the discussion and bring you something back.
Yeah, meet with Bill and whoever else and figure it out.
That's it.
At our last meeting, we voted on increase for, there's a long list of things and we said it. But we got this before we did that. Is that what was on there reflected in the budget, but not what we voted upon? I think it was less. Remember it was secured
No, it was budgeted, it was budgeted.
It was budgeted the way it was.
This year's, at the end of this year, there will be excess in the budget. So we'll be ahead. Because the percentages will lower.
But that's gonna come out of this year's budget?
It'll be in excess.
It was still
We'll have extra money in the budget now.
Yeah.
But that's not reflected in this
It's not. Correct. So, so, I mean, that's the other thing that I could adjust the budget forecast based on the current numbers.
Don, is there line items in here for the attorneys or no?
Yes.
There is.
Uh, it's in 330, 20, 310. Probably page 30, 39.
My page would be 30, which is the section for page 39.
It's page 39 and it's legal fees.
I'm gonna have to take a picture of it in the margin.
2310, Don?
Yes, so it's 40,000. It's budgeted at 40,000. Now, I also have to say that that's one that's actually at some risk because that does not contemplate a teacher arbitration and we do have teachers' negotiations next year. So that would potentially be an issue if we ended up there.
And there's three lawyers, correct?
Correct.
Is there a way to get the breakdown for each?
Yeah, we can tell you the hourly rate and what we pay each year to them. That's easy. For three year approach.
Do, do we trend higher than we budget often in that line?
Excuse me?
Do we trend higher than we budget often in that line? So we're budgeted, um, it looked like this year we're budgeted for 40. Up here, we were budgeted for 40, but we spent 71 this year.
It's, that's, I'll walk you through there. It depends on a number of things. One, as I said, is, you know, if, if depending on contract preparation. Two is another thing that can sometimes be an issue, our special ed hearings. So if we have a lot of difficult special ed cases, that can
That's just the forecast, is it?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
But as I said, I mean, it certainly, if, if we were to end up in arbitration with the teachers, it certainly would be higher than 40.
So should it be budgeted higher is my, my question? I, I don't, I mean, I just don't know, but if, cause that's a $30,000 increase, so if we're trying that every year?
Well, I'll go, I'm gonna go back and look, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just worth a look because $30,000 is
A half a teacher.
That's what I'm saying, it's a half a teacher.
Don, last year, what line item would have been on last year, do you know?
Should be
That's the same one, yeah. It'll be the same.
2310?
Right, 330, 2310. Now, since we pointed out, I mean, that's three separate law firms and so, you know, there's, there's a smaller firms. There's a smaller component for things like policy and, you know, that doesn't really get, usually get terribly expensive. It tends to be more negotiations, any personnel issues that we might have and special ed hearings. Those are the things that will cause it to ratchet up.
Last year was budgeted at 40,000 also.
Are there any more questions or the next budget workshop is scheduled for Thursday, February 7th? I can see that. Public comment? Okay. I have a motion to
I will.
On favor?
Aye.